But this is the moment that we've set aside for the council to discuss the budget. Just very briefly, I have put in front of each of you a letter which I've sent to the council. I was hoping all eight of us would be here, but in light of the fact there were only six of us, I've set aside a letter, I've written a letter, and it's in front of everybody concerning simple rules of conduct at city council meeting. I don't know that we have to discuss it right now, in fact we will not, it's not on the agenda. If any member of council would like to set any time aside in the next council meeting for any clarification or questions about this, then I'll be glad to do so. Alright, so what I'd like to do is start the budget discussions. First, a little, let me ask the manager like I typically do. Since the time that you presented the budget to the council, have any revenue projections, any alterations in the budget that you want to talk with us?
None at this time.
So, everything that we've had already is what we've already seen, in the governor's budget, there were no changes to either, you know, money you expect to come to us or to the school system?
Nothing at this time, yes.
Okay. At the budget hearing, we had thirty speakers, and I went through a list, just, you know, I don't know if y'all kept a note or not, but there were eleven speakers who spoke on education. Every one of the thirty speakers, by the way, wanted us to spend more money on something. No one said spend less. Of the thirty speakers, I think there were eleven for education, and then there were some for the library, and then some for, you name it, animal shelter, public employees, retirees, I've got the, I guess, homeless, Independence Center, which is, you know, is not our facility, although we help support it. Storm board of one person, some general comments, if anybody wants to pay any attention to, and even know any more about that, but we always seem to modify the budget in some regard from what we've heard at the budget hearings. What we typically do, and what I would suggest again that we do today, is we go around the room, everybody gets, make either one, have a question, make a comment, make a statement about the budget, and then we'll just take them one at a time, we'll go right around the room, and then as many times as we have to, for the time allotted, we'll just keep going around the room till we've, you know, got it all on the table, and then, you know, we'll see what we can do to amend the budget, so.
Is it one issue at a time?
Yeah, I think so. If you got one or two, you know, small ones, but, you know, I would expect the discussion to be sort of free-flowing, and I would, once they're all out there, then, you know, we can come back and see how much consensus there is for a change in the budget, so. Mr. Riddick, do you have anything?
Yeah. My major concern is the percentage of raise for, raises for employees. The manager has proposed two percent, and, but in light of the fact that employees have not had a raise in four years, and also the possibility of health insurance being raised, employees at the bottom of the rung, maybe at forty thousand dollars a year, will only realize about twenty-five percent, I mean, excuse me, twenty-five dollars a pay period, but that's not including the impact of the health insurance would have on them. So my question is, two, number one, Ward's Corner Hall that only asked for one million, and then the manager gave them two, so is it possible to bring a million dollars back to that, from that, to get close to three million dollars for another percentage raise? And secondly, Slovo Library, I think we're putting in, what, twelve, and some change, and my question there, are we obligated to some type of funding timetable because of the gifts that we're getting from the battens, that we could, that we have to put that much in there, or can we get a couple of million dollars from that?
Paul, I think we've signed the contract.
Okay.
With the construction company. But part of that money is donated money, am I right, or is this, okay, go ahead.
That's true. A couple of things. And this question came up earlier, the capital improvement plan, Mr. Riddick, we have, basically for every million that we have in the capital improvement plan, in the first year, we moved money, if we eliminated a project.
Okay.
We save about twenty thousand dollars for every million.
Okay.
In the first full year of a payment, we save about a hundred thousand for every million.
Okay.
So, we wouldn't get a big thing from moving capital projects and getting operating costs, operating savings. And the, and as far as the Slovo is concerned, yes, we have to answer the agreement with Slovo.
So, my question is, I really, I really strongly believe that we need to give our employees a three percent raise, which would cost us another three and a half billion dollars, and so I'm hoping that around this table, you know, we can find three and a half billion dollars, if we have enough consensus, to believe that our employees deserve that after not having a raise in four years.
Is that what one percent costs, three and a half million? Marcus, did that cost three and a half?
That's about right. For the city employees, one percent is about 1.8 million, and the schools, I think their two percent was close to four, 4.3, so.
So we just need 1.8 million to give them another percentage?
1.8 would be one percent for just the city employees.
Okay.
And the schools employees, their one percent is a little bit more than theirs.
I was more or less concentrating on the, while the school is important, my concentration was really on the city employees, and so I'm looking for a hundred, 1.8 million dollars to give them three percent.
Can I have a general question regarding that? Because it seems like there's some, I don't know if there's misinformation from who or what, I've gotten a couple of emails, and it seems like maybe the city employees are not clear on the retirement implications, health costs increasing, what they're going to be responsible for paying, whether or not, I know I sent one email to Ron, he responded back to the individual directly, but can we just, you know, state for the record what their, you know, what their two percent, if we're able to get two percent, includes, you know, are they going to be paying more in healthcare, is it, I mean, I think there's just some miscommunication amongst the city employees, so, you know, I just kind of like to know what we're doing.
Okay, I'll try to give it the first shot. In terms of the two percent, the two percent salary increase, unlike, in the past, it's been hit or miss in terms of who that applies to. This time we had it apply to everybody, so in other words, whether you're a full-time employee, a part-time employee, a casual part-time employee, any type of classification you're in, you get the two percent.
And of retirees.
Okay, retirees also a two percent. Now, for the retirees, the way this works, that two percent is worth, for every one percent is about seven hundred thousand dollars in cost, so that's about 1.4 million, but the way this works, it doesn't hit us in the 2013 budget, because there's an actual oral study that happens each year, so that wouldn't hit us in the 2013 budget, but it would be a cost that the city would have to pay to the retirement system in the future. In terms of healthcare, you know, what we attempt, what we did is the same thing we did last year, okay? Basically, we have two plans, and it's not like an HMO, and then let's say another plan. We have two plans that are very similar. We call it the plus, and one is the value plan. In the past, many people were in the plus plan. There's a savings for the city if people will get in the value plan, so I'm saying essentially, they have very similar plans. One, you pay a higher premium, because it's almost like insurance, you're getting, you know, this additional coverage, but I shouldn't say coverage, because it's the same doctors, it's the same access, so I'm saying we have two plans that are very similar. There's a savings being in the value plan to both the employee and the city. So what we did in the 2012 budget, we basically said, for all employees that are in that value plan, we will absorb all of the increase, 100%, so the current fiscal year that we're in. We said for all employees that are in the plus plan, we will absorb 50% of the increase, so not what you're voting on now, but what you voted on last May. We did that without a salary increase. We're doing the same thing in 2013, proposing the same thing in 2013, and that is, for anybody in the value plan, we pick up 100% of the premium increase. For anybody who chooses to be in the plus plan, it's a 50-year split, much like last year. And if you migrate into the value plan, I think the way this works is even for a single employee, you would pick up an additional, I think, twenty-seven dollars a month, just moving outside of the two percent, moving from the plus plan to the value plan, and there's some overall savings for the city, having people in that value plan.
With this two percent across the board raise, my concern is similar to Councilman Riddick's, that the two percent on the bottom, the people on the bottom, it's not as big as somebody who makes over a hundred thousand or is at the top, and if I got that correct, when you guys were looking at the budget and giving this increase, did you consider looking at step increases for employees, or not giving raises to those that are already making, you know, a good enough salary, and trying to shift some of that, maybe giving them a three or four percent raise at the bottom, calling it a two percent average raise across, but giving more raises to the people that are at the bottom and less at the top? And, you know, the model that was used, that I, you know, is the stimulus money that came for school employees when they decided to give that as a bonus, they decided not to give everybody the same amount, but they did it based off of the lower amount you made, you got a bigger bonus than those that were making enough money, you know, at the top.
Yeah. Councilman Spink, we did, well, first of all, we listened to the employees, and we asked what was more important to them, a general wage increase, a step increase, and the step is basically 2.5%. We have twenty steps in the system, and if you have a step increase, you get the equivalent of about a two and a half percent salary increase. And then we said a bonus, you know, as you know, like last year, a bonus is one time, it's not reoccurring. For the most part, employees wanted the general wage increase, because even if we did a step increase, those individuals who were at step twenty would get nothing, because you step out. So what we thought would be something that would impact everybody, would be to have a general wage increase, which basically, and I guess this is getting too much into the details, would adjust all the steps, and everybody benefits, so we, again, we didn't just do the permanent employees. When we did the bonus last year, it didn't impact some employees. We thought that the two percent, we haven't done something in a matter of a number of years, and there are many ways of doing it, but we thought just across the board, two percent was the best way.
Well, in that, keeping that in mind, have you thought about going back and reevaluating a step system? Because what is happening now with a lot of places that have steps, is there are people who have been stuck on steps now for five or six years, they're not, you're giving these two percent increases, and that's great, but that, the whole system of seniority, I guess, the longer you're in, is kind of going away, because people aren't getting their step increases. You know, I'm still at step six, I've been at step six for five years now in the school system, and, you know, we were promised that when they condensed the steps down to twenty, they went from thirty, where you automatically got a step increase every year, based off of how many years of service you have, that they went down to twenty, that you would get to the top faster, but nobody's moved to the top.
No, I agree.
Not even at a snail's pace.
Right. Yeah, I'll tell you, public safety is probably more impacted with that than anybody else in terms of what the feedback we've gotten, the importance of the steps and the seniority that comes with it. So yes, we did look at that as a step going into the future, including, we have some classes of employees that are so far out of what we would call the average salary. In the past, it's been, I think, you do a market study, and if you get somewhere around six percent out of just the average salary, that that's something you should address. So because we've gone so long without any salary increases, looking at some of those positions that are well, well out of the market, looking at this whole step system in general, because you get the situation where people, you know, will top out after so many years, it's something that we are going to look into.
There is, I don't want, I don't, we don't have time to get into all this stuff about step increases, but steps came into vogue many years ago when interest, I mean, when inflation rates were running so doggone high, that, you know, the step was basically, was a seniority issue, and on top of that, we were putting cost of living. Pretty soon, you know, people were getting not only two or three percent or four or five percent cost of living, but they were getting another two and a half percent in, and at some point, we were racing beyond what the private sector was even doing, and so I think a lot of cities are even rethinking the notion of steps, so. Okay, but I mean, I don't want to debate that right now, but I think it's a legitimate issue for sure. So, alright.
Okay. Two quick things. I'm looking at the visit Norfolk, I'm trying to understand, last year, and the Botanical Gardens, both of them.
What did you want?
Two twenty-seven, and then also two, two thirty-one or two thirty-two. Now, my understanding is last year, let's say Botanical Gardens got a million, one twenty-four, nine-ten, right? You know, two thirty, two twenty-seven?
Yes.
Is that right?
Botanical Gardens, last year.
Million, one twenty-four.
Yes.
And that's what your proposed issue, but part of that was the public amenities grant or something?
Yes, so what we did, Councilman Lynn, is that, if you may recall, there was a million dollars on the public amenities fund, there was this million dollars from the bed tax, the one dollar bed tax, then there was five hundred thousand dollars from what used to be tops. As we went around the table, council put in another half a million dollars for these entities. What we tried to do this-
We had the five hundred for tops, and we made it a million, is that right?
That's exactly right.
We didn't do a million and make it another.
No, that's right. So what we did is we took that five hundred thousand dollars that council added, and just built it into their base. So Botanical Gardens, going forward, that fraction of five hundred thousand is just a part of their base 2013 budget, yes.
This year, which shows, when you go back to the other page, that it says it's a fifty-two-thousand-dollar increase, but it's actually the same as they got last year, for the Botanical Gardens and the Visit Norfolk.
That's right.
Yeah, is that amenities fund, or that million dollars going to be split up again this year, or has that gone away?
That has gone away. What's remaining from the public amenities fund that's going to these groups is about a quarter of a million dollars.
Has that been allocated?
No.
So that, so basically, they're both, like, Visit Norfolk is flat.
That's right.
For the year, as, you know, I, those are two that I'd like, you know, Visit Norfolk, and they have, as somebody said, no way of raising money or generating revenues, other than, I think their return to the city is pretty strong, that we ought to look at something there, and I think, you know, the Botanical Gardens also, we ought to, they kind of sit back there and do a great job, and I would like to see the two of those get-
Two percent?
Oh, yeah, a couple percent.
I mean, they keep for their employees, is that what you're?
What?
I mean, is that what you're saying, for their employees?
Well, a couple percent to their budget, so they can help the employees or whatever. But, that's, that's my first pass. Okay.
Your first one.
Okay.
Well, we're doing one thing a piece, you weren't here when, when we explained how we're doing it, Andrew.
This way we're doing it every-
You had the longest way to come, right? Upstairs. Mr. Murphy?
My first one would be-
I didn't bother linking the policy to the poll.
Some of the, yeah, some of the things we talked about.
You get one thing.
Okay. That are not in neighborhood plans, but there was a particular project in Tanner's Creek that we had been working on for, I know, at least six years or so. We had implemented a temporary fix, and this was the path that allowed the Tanner's Creek townhouses, and I know John, John is in Kifler, would recall how long ago this issue has been on the table. What, and the folk there have, mostly seniors there, what we're ultimately trying to do is put a muse there, so a garbage truck could actually ride through and pick up the trash opposed to the people having to drag their trash cans all the way to the end. Somewhere that got lost, and I know John has the numbers on that, but that's one of the things I would want to make first pass at, as-
A muse?
Yeah, muse, not a street, a muse, a new line.
So they can work, back a trash truck up, they pick up-
Yeah, so the trash truck arrives right on through, pick the cans up, and lets out on another street, yeah.
Is there a street there now?
No.
It's just, the back, what is it?
It's, we put a asphalt path back there, but it's a thin path.
There's a property back there?
Yeah, because it abuts the school property, it abuts Rosemont School, so.
And what the people have to do is take their trash all the way around and out, and I mean, it's really incon, yeah, it's really inconvenient.
Okay.
I would just like to say, on the employee, a little bit back to employee raises, is that if we increase three percent, then I think we need to look at increasing everybody three percent. I don't think we should make a distinction between, because nobody's had a raise, it's not like some people have had a raise, and some people have haven't, haven't. So if we're going to give a raise, we need to give everybody a raise, including the retirees on braces. And I'll be back.
Now you're in the meddling, I mean, we're in millions of dollars already.
Well, you know, I mean, you know, we didn't give some and not give others, the only people that didn't get anything last time, when we did the bonuses, were the part-time people and retirees, they got nothing last time. So if we're going to increase, then we need to increase everybody.
That's true, okay.
So.
Right. I just think, in order for us to continue being a well-managed and efficient government, that the city auditor's office should increase staff, and I was disappointed to see that there was no increase in staff in that office. I think with the workload that John has taken on, and even the increase from the fraud hotline and what that's brought in, as well as CSB coming over to the city, that it would be prudent for us to add a position in there to allow him to have an auditor, and I think with all the staffing increases we've seen in some of the other departments, that shifting one of those positions over, it should just offset with it.
Okay.
So my thoughts are yours.
Yeah, well, actually, I think you ought to leave. I mean, the other positions have probably been argued for internally, if you need to add a position, I think we can add a position. Thank you. That just costs fifty thousand dollars. The libraries, Marcus, I don't know what it costs to keep them open, to go back to the regular schedule, that we keep them open on Wednesdays, is that when we close them? What days are you closing them?
We close them Mondays.
Mondays. What would it cost to keep the libraries open? I'd like to, we heard about that at the budget hearing.
It's, to reopen the branches on Monday, it's about five hundred and forty thousand dollars.
That's, are you, just for one day?
Yes, sir.
How much was that?
Five forty.
It's like fifty-two days.
Oh, I'm sorry, for fifty-two, yeah, I know that, but I-
Fifty-two times, ten thousand a day.
All right, well, that's, that's just one thought. One other thing about the libraries, I didn't find anywhere in the budget, maybe there is some money, capital money for repairing libraries, I mean, we heard from the couple members of the library board, and one said they needed books, one said they needed repairs to the library, one said we need, you know, to stay open another day, the, on Mondays. You know, I looked through your budget, I found money set aside to repair recreation centers, three hundred grand, which ended up, it's been three hundred grand forever, but I didn't see any where money specifically set aside for libraries, repair.
In the past, there, there were a series of CIP projects for the same, for libraries, much like we do with the rec centers, and I don't think we've had that in the budget for a few years. We do have a quarter of a million dollars more in just our general building repairs, so we added that. I think you will recall, that's one of the first places that we started to cut in the, like, 2008, 2007. So that quarter of a million, I can tell you there are more, there are enough calls on it.
Yeah.
But there isn't anything that's pulled out specifically for libraries.
Library buildings do we have? How many branches do we have, right?
Eleven. I believe we have eleven there. Ten neighborhood branches.
Ten neighborhood branches.
Yes.
Okay. Well, it seems to me that, I mean, if, when your guys start fighting among, you know, who's going to give money for which projects, seems to me like libraries, I mean, repair work, like painting, broken windows, lights, they shouldn't have to squabble with other people for money, I mean, that you, and, so to the extent we could add some capital money, I know you added three hundred for rec centers, maybe you don't need, we got a lot more rec centers than ten, but, and that number, three hundred for rec centers, has been flat forever, I don't know how you get it, get there, so I'd like you to consider, the council to consider putting money into CIP projects to repair libraries, and I'm talking about minor maintenance, I'm not talking about adding wings, or, I'm talking about roof repairs and that sort of stuff, I mean, you know, maybe, you know, two hundred fifty thousand dollars or so, and I, I think the recreation center numbers are three hundred, I don't know how you get to all of them with three hundred, that's like a coat of paint in each room or something.
We don't.
You don't, and I tried to get somebody years ago to put more money in, and they did it one year, and then it went back to the three hundred, and then we went into the recession, and we didn't get a chance to get back to it, so. I don't know what number works, maybe y'all might want to take a look at, but I think the library, maybe a quarter of a million, maybe add another, and that's not, this is bonded money, right? I mean, this is in the capital, so it's going to cost us a few grand this year, but if you put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in for the library maintenance, and added another hundred thousand dollars for recreation center maintenance, you know, that, you know, I mean, I don't know how you get to three hundred thousand dollars, it's pretty thin when you start, you know, fixing, you know, old floors and, you know, on the south side, you know, those gyms, I mean, I'm just, all right, so that's my suggestion is libraries. Okay. Paul, you got another one?
Yeah, I don't know how the, in public works, how the capital funds are distributed this year, there might be some closeout funds, but over in Huntersville, Fremont, A, B, and C Avenue, they are in dire needs of sidewalk curbs and gutters. And so, like I say, I don't know what's, you know, how it's supposed to be allocated, and if they're closeout funds, but Huntersville has been neglected when it comes to the public works dollar, and I'd like to see us pay attention to that, I'll give it to John Kiper to find out, you know, where we are. We did, at one time, you know, back in the nineties, we were able to do a block a year, curb sidewalks, gutters, but that has fallen off, I guess, over the last six or seven years. And not in this particular budget cycle, but one thing I'd like to see us explore, is one thing that, you know, I've said this several years ago, when we had money, we paid no attention to it. Our infrastructure's, you know, falling out around us, undergrounding. I would like, and like I said, not this budget cycle, and maybe, maybe not putting all the money in at one time, but I'd like to look at the possibility of us consider, consider undergrounding some of our utilities, some of those poles up there, it's older than I am. As far as Huntersville is concerned, I'd like to see us maybe study to underground O'Keefe Street, and sort of make that a little small boulevard, and that's, like I said, not this year, but something that we can study to fund maybe next year and the following, and then maybe the third year, we'll have the money for it, because I know undergrounding is expensive, yeah.
Well, several years ago, we looked at an ordinance that Alexandria had actually adopted, where they said every new pole that was put up, or every pole, I mean, every time they did a new block, they, everything had to go underground, so over time, a couple decades or so, everything started to go underground, and if we got a process in place, the problem was, I think Dominion Power pushed it back pretty strong, and, but, I mean, I think it's worth, I think it certainly, anything that stands between you and a look at the sky, we ought to try to take away, and that's what these lines do, and-
Doesn't it become more cost-efficient for them anyway, with damage to lines and things like that, to put it underground?
Put them underground, but, yeah, but the upfront expense, they don't want to do.
They don't want to do.
But I think we ought to certainly, I'd be all for looking, looking at that, trying to phase- But I think we ought to certainly, I'd be all for looking, looking at that, trying to phase it out. All right, Barkley?
Okay, my second thing is more of a question. I look at our risk management fund, which we've got a million eight, and I think we should have eleven million six. What are other cities, I mean, how, how, I mean, that seems like it could go away really fast. And, and, I mean, if we were talking about spending more money on them, that would be something we just have to pull money, I guess, out of economic downturn or reserves, or, and that could affect our bonding rate. So I, I think we've got to be more aggressive in building up that risk management. Because I, I don't, under two million out of eleven, over eleven million, doesn't make me real warm and fuzzy about it. And I know it's, I just don't, if we had a big hit, where do you go for the money?
You break the next point, Councilman Winn. When the rating agencies look at our reserves, they start with that five percent reserve, which is about forty-one million.
Which we got overfunded.
And then they stack on top of that our, what we call, let's say, the rainy day fund of that economic downturn leveling fund, which is two million.
Do most cities have one of those?
Well, most cities, let's do it a different way. The rating agencies would love for us to have that five percent closer to ten.
Five percent what?
Closer to ten percent.
And that just covers everything?
Yes, sir.
So they, most cities have one reserve fund and...
They, they would have a healthier reserve fund than, than what we have at five percent. But I would tell you that that economic downturn fund is good, because you're not typically going into fund balance. And when you have a rainy day, when you have an event that you could go into that fund. And as you pointed out, we should be at ten, ten million for that.
We're at two.
We're at two. Right. So typically what happens at a year end, locality may have financial policies that say some percentage of a surplus would go into that risk management reserve, or some percentage of a surplus would go into the, for lack of a better word, the rainy day fund. And that's how you can build it up over time.
Right, but we're not building very fast.
Yes, sir.
In fact, in that concern, I, I mean, as a businessman, that would concern me if we're, we're self-insuring and whatever, and we've got that little coverage for the amount of exposure we've got out here. And I mean, I want all that raises and giving more people money and whatever. But I would, I think we ought to aggressively pursue that fund. You say most cities would just have one, which would be closer to ten percent, which would have all that wrapped into it? Or do they have three funds?
Sure, it's a variety. I would say that typically, typically if you wanted to start off with, let's say, a triple A rated locality, and I'm not saying that everybody's triple A, but you would start off with, I think the entry point is being north of seven percent, but clearly ten percent. And you could do it many ways. You could have that fund balance digger, or you could have some one-offs. I will say that that's not all we have for risk management. You know, as a matter of fact, that's just a calculation of what we have for, what we typically have for risk management. That's over and above it. So it's not just that we have, you know, one point nine million dollars. But your point is well-taken, that we have these practices in terms of these reserves. Five percent were great, but the other two were not even close.
We have four million dollars if you took the economic downturn. You would go there first, I assume, if we had a liability issue. So we have, we have what we think we ought to have, twenty-one point six million. We've got under four, basically, between the economic downturn and the risk management.
That's true. What I will say is that council's never adopted a formal policy with it.
But staff is saying that's what you'd be comfortable with.
Yes, sir.
I just think we're, I think we're in that, I think, I think it's, uh...
I would point to page two twenty-three, that we do have claim payments and insurance for general liability, which is two point five million. So, so again, that's what we budget annually. This reserve is just that, it's a reserve, in case something...
That's over the two point five.
That's, that's right.
That's closer, but you're still not...
Right.
It's an easy thing not to put money into, but I'm not so sure it's a smart thing not to put money into. Because, you know, we have a downturn like an automobile accident over Bramleton a couple of years ago. That was north of five million, wasn't it?
Three.
Seven and a half.
Was it seven and a half? Seven and a half million dollars, so...
That begs the question about why we haven't bought an umbrella policy. And, you know, we keep coming back to this year after year, when you start talking about those risks. I mean, about what is the premium to buy an umbrella after five million dollars or something like that? I mean, it just seems, we, we talk about it. Every time we have a discussion like this, then we never hear it.
I, I just...
But Marcus, you know, some of the money that we carried over of the nine, which you took two and put it into the undesignedated. I know you've used about six of that, did you say, in the budget, to balance this thing? The other two or three, have you parked it someplace, or have you put it in a fund?
It, it's right now, let's say, still in our undesignedated fund balance. That is something that you could do. Take that, the two or three million dollars, and you could put it into each one of those funds.
Well, we, we improved the undesignedated fund balance this year already. And I know you're, but, and if you say they, if you put it in the undesignedated fund balance, if you ever go to get it, the rating agencies will squawk.
That's right.
If you put it in the, in the economic downturn fund, or, and then they, they don't squawk.
Yes, sir.
Well, you know, why don't you keep one in the undesignedated fund balance? Put one in the, in, in the downturn, and put one in the, you know, in the liability fund, and...
Well, if you have a big liability issue, it's gonna be an economic downturn, so... I mean, that, you know, I think that's the first place you go, you can call it. I just think we need more to in the, right?
We're doing better this year than we've done in a long time.
Yes, sir.
We've actually pushed it up by eleven million, by, no, I think five million, three plus two.
How much does an, I mean, what does an umbrella policy cost? And what are the pluses and minuses of how we do it versus having an, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't either, and I don't think we can solve that today, right.
Yeah, and I, I don't mean that we will, but I mean, maybe we can look at...
Talk about it every year, for some reason, we never get there.
Well, maybe somebody can come from the staff and bring a presentation, and let us see what the benefits are doing it the way we do it.
We did everything over five.
And what are the benefits of getting an umbrella policy, and what the cost would be and the implications? I mean, until we look at it and know what it all, you know, boils down to, we don't know if we're really doing the right thing or not. Or the best thing.
It's actually, we are in the midst of preparing that information for the manager and council's consideration. It is a very laborious effort, because there are lots of information about the city's actual experiences that we compiled. But we do expect in, I wanna say, the next forty-five days to have that information back, that we can quantify where the trigger marks are and what the cost of each level of coverage.
Anthony?
My second part would be the choice communities. Looking at some of the communities that we're concentrating on as it relates to that. And I know that Northview is an area. And so I was looking at, you know, we've been working in the Five Points area for quite some time. And looking at, we've been talking about, one of the, the top issues there had been acquisition and demolition for quite some time. So looking at properties there, and hopefully being able to utilize some of those dollars in this budget to be able to identify some critical key properties or, or property, and, and put a dent in the efforts that we've been trying to make in that community for quite some time, so...
That doesn't require any more money, right? That's just a question?
No, that's money that...
It's already set aside for choice communities, yes.
And put emphasis on it.
New money.
Okay, all right.
I tell you.
Okay, Angela?
On the curbs and gutters, I know that we have about five hundred thousand or so, give or take, for curbs. Is there any way that we can increase that, maybe even, because I think that got us twelve projects last year? So, you know, I mean, we have several communities that don't, that have requested curbs and gutters. I think we got like two hundred requests, Alice sent me an email, I think we got like a couple hundred requests. And we were actually only able to fill like twelve of them, which equals out to about forty-one thousand dollars a project. So if possible, could, could we add another five hundred to curbs and gutters? And then maybe in some of the communities where, because I know some of the communities slope, and there might be a reason why there's no curbs, sidewalks, and all that. Maybe we could explain that better from a logistical standpoint of water runoff and flooding and whatever the case may be. But going into some of those communities that it may not make sense to add, to take away that sloping and add a curb and gutter, you know, that's, that's something a little bit down the line. But I would like to add more money to curbs and gutters. And sidewalks.
Yeah, but now we're into the millions.
I don't know what the dollar figure is on this, but we did have five speakers that spoke about the animal shelter and moving Norfolk to become a no-kill city. They had a great argument, you know, that this basically pays for itself over time. And I don't know if you've looked in how we can address this, whether, I mean, it could just be fifty thousand dollars to hire somebody who starts that initiative, or maybe they need money for a campaign to start like a TNR or something like that, if we were able to change that. But I think that it's something that should be addressed, especially with the stats that were given to us, although it could be considered biased from some sources. They did have a good argument with some of the stats they gave us, that it will reduce the expense on the city if we were to be a little bit more progressive with becoming a no-kill shelter. And I, I'm probably bringing that up on behalf of our superhero Andy.
Hey, don't tell, don't tell that, where, you moved it out of planning, where is it now?
General services.
General services.
Can I make, okay, is that your?
Yeah.
If I could just comment on that. Look, I, I, you know, seems to be some consensus around the table that we need to change what we're doing. But we're doing it, I think, maybe we ought to, first of all, look at our policy. And maybe that's what Tommy was saying, and decide that we want to change it before we fund, put money into it to change it. I mean, that's all I, and I, I've asked the manager about it. And I know this cuts a couple ways. He said there's no other locality in Virginia that has a no-kill policy. Okay, now, I can hear Dr. Whibley, well, so what, we, we should be first.
We're the local government.
Okay, but if you're, no other local government. But if you're gonna be first, there's a reason that nobody else, and there's a hundred and forty-some jurisdictions in the state. There's a reason nobody else does. And if we're, if we're gonna be the only ones to do it, we ought to, at a minimum, think it through pretty closely. So if you want to park some money to do this, assuming that there's a consensus on the council after we discuss it to do it, then I, I think that's the way we ought to go about doing it. I, I know there were six folks down there. I mean, I mean, just the notion of no-kill, everybody responds warmly to that, let's not do that. But I, but there are other factors. I mean, not even PETA thinks that that's a good policy. And so I'd just like to know, I know some of you, Tommy, have had presentations at your committee level. This, I've not seen a presentation, we've only just done it one way. And if we, all I would like is a presentation, and if we all, and I, my, my thinking is the manager thinks that, you know, we should be careful about this. And, you know, so let's, let's just sort of, if we're gonna do this, let's make sure we know what we're doing, that's all I'm saying.
And Mayor and Councilman Smigle, I did talk with staff. There seem to be four points that were brought up at the hearing. And three of the four, I'd say that we're, we're doing and we're striving to do a better job. And if I mess this up, Frank or Ann, let me know. Basically, the point one was a strong, robust foster care program, and working on it. We believe that's right, we should improve that. A comprehensive adoption policy, working on that, believe we should do that and improve it. You know, actively work with rescue shelters, we should improve on that also. So we agree all three. A, a fourth one that wasn't mentioned, which is just enhanced reclamation. So in other words, as explained to me, you know, there may be a dog that we have in our shelter that has, you know, identification that says, you know, Polly. But still, that's all we have. So if we were able to, whether it's the, you know, the veterinarians, the permits, things of nature, have a better tracking system, there's a better way for us in terms of, to get to the reclamation, which we think will really move the needle. The TNR, you know, then I, the one thing that, you know, I would suggest with that is that there is, there are pros and cons. And if we did have some time to look at that piece and provide counsel with an update, I think that we could get to a very good point in terms of this process. So three of the four, you know, we, we agree a hundred percent, striving to improve. We threw a, a bitten one in there, which is reclamation, which we really think, when we talked to Virginia Beach, that made a big change there. The trap due to release is the one that we'd like to have some time to gather information and provide it to everybody.
Are you saying we can move to the no-kill without a problem?
No, no, what I'm saying is that there's some elements that are presented that we should be doing anyway.
But it's not a, it's just a change of philosophy more than, right now.
Well, and part of this too is, and what the committee discussed, was switching to this animal board that's gonna talk and address this. But I think that, you know, if we wait till next budget cycle, if we give this group a year to talk about what they want to do, but if there's some programs that can be implemented while they're progressing with some of the more controversial practices, but there could be some money there for them to do a project, you know, if there's an adoption. And they also, a lot of these organizations have resources that are private, that are outside, that they could also bring in and help with as well. So I think we're gonna shift in that direction. But, you know, they, you know, there's been, it's very, it's funny, because it's more political than what I even knew with different arguments and, and different sides. But on the surface, when you look at the data, even from our neighbor cities, I think we, as you said, we could do better with it, so...
If it really is what you're saying, it's a change in just the way we operate without a real budgetary impact. If you're talking about, you know, a few thousand or some, you know, thirty, forty thousand later on, then we can always get that out of contingency, I mean, that's, and agree to.
We just need to head.
But, but let's at least figure out what we're doing. I mean, at least I'd like to know what the presentation is, and then we can...
We can get you a presentation, Mr. Mayor.
I know, and I know, and I know.
I have fifty-five letters right here.
I know, I've got some right here.
I'm sure, I'm sure. Okay, well, letter-writing campaign shouldn't be the whole thing. We used to have a rule, if we could have twenty-three or twenty-four people in council chambers, that, that decided the issue. Okay? All right, Paul, you have anything else to say?
No, I wanna hold up, because I think that, well, in my opinion, that salary increase is, is important. And someone has added the retirees. I don't like to see us pile on, because these are two issues I feel so strongly about. I believe we really need to, you know, do something about. So to answer your question, no.
I just have a couple questions on page sixty-five. You got other missed savings income, which used to be five hundred thousand, now it's almost a million four. What is that?
Those are two known items that we, that we know that are coming in.
One time, though?
One time, yeah.
What are they?
One is related to a program that's with Nauticus, an event they're having over the summer, I guess, for FANTO. Did I get that right? And the other one is just a reimbursement that we know is coming back to the, to the general fund, both one time.
Real quick, on page seventy-one, and your expenditures for the office and budget management, it's gone from a million, it's gone up about five hundred thousand, and communications and public information's gone up seven hundred thousand. Is that just a reshuffling?
That's a reshuffling. And one thing that no one's brought up, but many positions, I think they're, they're, if you look at the numbers, the general fund is about eighty-five new positions. They're not really new. Over the years, a number of these positions have been what we call special project, which is supposed to be for two years. But we have special projects that have gone on for, you know, a decade. So we just reclassify them to what they should be. You know, some of the positions in budget were positions that were non-general fund. We reclassified those to what they should be. So this was pretty, making things right.
This will be more consistent next year.
Oh, right, that won't have to change. All right.
Well, I noticed that you're moving the realist, what is it? The... The, uh...
Senior.
Senior real estate program out of the Commissioner of Revenue's office.
What we have is, this year we capped senior and disabled tax relief at 6 million. In the past, it had been as high as 7.5 million. The reason we capped it was because it was just the easiest way to do it. We think there's a more thoughtful way to do it. In other words, let's look at the different levels of relief, and, but in order, because the process has already started, it was just a lot easier just to put the cap at 6 million. We put $100,000 in what we call, I guess, non-general funds, just in case there's somebody who slips through the cracks. Now, the concept is, we don't want somebody who is getting 100% relief in 2012 not to get that relief in 2013, with unintended consequences. So what we're trying to do is be more thoughtful in the next cycle, and we believe if we move that to human services, much like they do in the airport news, that we could make sure that we have the date that's related to real estate, but we're also looking at the, the people that are the least in terms of the dollars that are available to them.
What would you do with the positions that, that operate solely for that?
We didn't touch those positions, there were bits and pieces, let me say it a different way, there were multiple things that those positions did, so therefore, we didn't eliminate any positions related to them.
So we move the function, is that what you're saying?
We're moving the function to human services.
Okay.
Shouldn't you move the employees who do, perform the function?
Well, we tried to do no harm, starting off, we just, again, didn't know, we didn't believe, we didn't know if 100% of their time was related to this function, so therefore, I think it's three employees that we didn't.
What you're looking at, I mean, that's three.
Yeah.
I mean, that would help.
Because if the, if the commissioner, you know, comes and asks, you know, for extra money, then that'll be double dip. In other words, we're taking the entire responsibility out, but yet we're keeping the fund. I guess I'm trying to say the right thing, take the money away from the, from the positions.
Every time this comes up, I feel compelled to say, although we cap it, there's never been somebody who didn't receive the benefit?
Right.
Right, okay.
I was saying, well, Wayne sounds like Brennan.
Okay, Angela.
We've got an item that was an add-on for refunds on our agenda tonight. Where, and I may have missed it, where in our budget are those, how are those kinds of pop-up items addressed? Like, we've got the, the add-on tonight.
Real estate refund.
Right, but, I mean, that money was paid in, and we probably spent it, so now we have to give it back, and if we have more of those, for any, any kind of large refund, where does that money come from?
For the most part, we look at real estate as one, one pot. So, over the course of a year, we may not collect all that we thought we were gonna collect, so in other words, we never assumed that we're gonna collect 100%. And built into that, that one pot, there are, you know, the opportunities for the refunds, as well as even new people coming into the area, so we, I know that's not the answer you want to hear, but we treat it as, you know, one pot money.
But this is not a real estate refund, if I read it correctly, I thought it was...
Right, A or equity.
It was, okay, okay, all right, I, I understood it to be something else, but okay.
I know everyone's small, yes. Okay, on page 6.
Mr. Williams, correct, that right and equity is not a real estate tax refund.
Right, it was BPP, right?
It's an assessment by the Commissioner of Revenue that, that the two companies had some merger, and they paid this amount twice.
Okay.
But that doesn't answer your question, but that, that's the reason it's being refunded, is that we were...
Yeah, that's what I thought it was, it was BPP, not real estate.
Yes, yes, yeah, I'm sorry.
So, that, when we have such, because we've had, I mean, there's been refund, where does that?
Sure, we have assumptions, like for instance, page 61, you'll see personal property tax refunds, you see that negative number, that's the assumption, again, the money that's going out, we have real estate tax refunds, so there are assumptions related to, to refunds built into the budget.
Yeah, um, this goes, they both go along with each other, the first part of it is about our uncollected debt and where we are with that. I, I want to say when I was flipping through this the first time, that I saw that we were sitting at about 10 million that was uncollected, am I wrong with that number?
You mean delinquent?
Yeah, just, uh, delinquent taxes, where, I know we, we made a big improvement on it, but where are we sitting with the amount of money that we still haven't collected?
Well, no, they, they set a goal, basically, what is potentially out there, whether it be real estate or personal property, we, we keep the budget, so for example, personal property, the goal was this year, in terms of delinquencies, was 10 million, and so we're about, uh, we've exceeded that goal, in terms of 10 million, we're above, we're, we're above 10 million, so 11 million as relates to, uh, personal property delinquencies. As relates to real estate, you know, they upped the goal this year to about 8 million eight, but the reality of it is, we've brought that number down so much, it's not even out there. So the goal that we were supposed to meet this year, it's not even enough delinquents for us to capture, so that just means that there'd be more money captured on the front end than the back end.
Okay. Do you budget that money? You, you automatically budget that, or just, it just go into?
We budget the, for delinquencies also, yes.
You do, okay.
Yes.
I was looking, I'm searching for money for the school system, I, I keep on looking, and the second part of that is with fees that we can collect, and I don't know what state law allows, but as a locality, can we put a fee on an apartment, a developer who's going to build a brand-new apartment complex? Considering how much money apartment developers usually end up making off their project, and the burden that an apartment can bring to a city because you're, you're bringing in that many people, does the state allow us to charge a, a separate fee for those type of projects, or not? Is that allowed? I know you can't change the tax, but...
Yeah, yes, that's where, where I'm going, is that you can charge a, a reasonable fee for anything provided, and so for that developer, for us, we're doing his site plan, we can charge him a fee for that, for the building permit, we can charge him a fee for that, we've got, um, groundwater type things, and so that if there's something we're providing to him, we can, we can charge a fee for that, and we could look over everything that we're doing for him, and see if we're fully collecting all of the fees, and we're coming at whole on them, but if we go beyond a fee, then it's a, a, a tax, and so that if it's not related to a service provided, it's a tax, and, and our power to taxes is, is, is limited, so that we have to be uniform in our real estate tax, so that we couldn't bump it and say that you're causing more children to be in our public schools and have a public, but, but, so, yeah, I'm trying to answer your question in generalities, any service that we provide, we can charge a fee for, and if, if it's above the cost of the service and a reasonable return on that service, then it becomes a tax, and we have to analyze whether we have that power for taxation.
Are there localities in Virginia that, when they're building new housing communities, that they are responsible, there's a certain fee or charges that go directly to the schools, that it's not levied by a school board or anything, but that there's...
I don't require to give a school site in a big development.
Right, yeah, and I'm just wondering, it, I, you know, I know the homestead law years ago was popular, and I don't know if, when we look at our legislative agenda next year, and looking at how we can try to, you know, tax those that can afford, you know, more, and, and asking Brian to go up there and lobby, or ask one of our legislators to go back and look at, were they proposing 80% or something at one time, you know, with that?
And they...
I know it's hard to get it through, but I think that it's, you know, we could at least try again.
Sure, sure, but, I mean, in this year's budget, I mean, I know you're looking for, you're looking for, you know, trying to put another couple hundred thousand in, in their operating budget, or 250, if, we can't tell them how to spend it, is, you know, I looked at their credit cards, for instance.
Yeah.
They went from $100 a teacher to 50 bucks in their budget.
Right.
And I thought, gee, that would be a neat way to get, that we could do something, it sounds to me, I don't know, they got 4,000 employees or 40,000, I don't have many teachers, I don't know, without rattling too many cages, but, then I thought, well, we might as well stop trying to figure out how we should spend the money, because they're the ones, but if you're talking about another good faith piece, like a quarter of a million dollars or something, is that...
Yeah, I just, I, I think there's two areas in the school system that they could probably use the money right now to help, one is with literacy teachers, in the cut from the literacy teachers and with on-time graduation, but also things like technology, I know Anthony's talked about the computers, we have computers now in our school system that are five, six, seven years old, they can't even operate at the level, and that's something that could not be a, a expense every year on our budget, but if there was a one-time drop in the, you know, bucket for them to buy, purchase new technology, you know, we want to keep our schools, you know, in the technical age.
Yeah, we can't tell them, but we could suggest, we think you ought to decide to use the technology. Is that, can you do that, Bernard?
There are seven pots that we're able to segregate money into, go to the school system, as you said, they have mostly discretion. I don't know if one of the pots is a technology.
Yeah, I don't want to get too deep into that, but if we...
But I would say summarily that...
You couldn't, if, we might increase your budget by $250,000, don't expect it, you know, to happen next year, but that's, maybe it's, it'll probably happen next year, but if you put 250 in there, that would allow them, in one-time money, to do with what they thought was best, and we have the notion that maybe it'd be technology. Now, to get there, you have funded 1.3 out of 1.8 million dollar VRS request, that's right, is that right?
We funded the whole 1-8.
1-8.
Yes.
And you have actually five years to do that.
We have five years to do that.
So if you were to take that money and reduce that, we'll see if you took $300,000 and reduced it to 1,500,000, you could come back next year and, and we could put the 300 back in.
That's right.
And you'd still be, we'd still be in keeping with what the law requires.
That's right.
That wouldn't add an additional burden to your budget this year, right? So what we're doing is just moving money for the retirement system, for the teachers, that we have eight years, which you funded all this year, which is good, but if we just took 300, we'll come back next year and backfill it, and we'll put the 300 in the school system's budget.
So, if I understand you, Mayor, it'd be the equivalent, instead of doing the 5%, we could do four of the five, and do that last percent in the 2014 budget, and take that savings.
Right.
And use it for something else in the system.
So, that, that gets them the money.
Yeah, I, I think...
And that doesn't ruffle any feathers, and doesn't cause us to change any, any, any other money.
Yeah, and I, I think that, you know, probably now's not the time to discuss it, but we're down the road, we need to look at some kind of revenue stream for the schools.
I would love to, and I, I think...
And maybe it's a retreat topic, and, I mean, you know, and I, I suggested to Marcus that any of the property that has been turned over to the city that the school system used to own, that if we sell that property, that that money automatically can go back into the school system, you know.
You talk about new schools or operating, or both?
Both, whichever one it could go into, but just trying to figure out where we can find, I mean, it's our number one priority, I think, you know, other than neighborhoods in crime, but lifelong learning is our, really our number one priority, so trying to move that in the direction, because we know the state's cutting us, and everybody's dealing with this, you know, we're down the road, we have to look at, you know, how taxes are collected.
We're gonna have an enlightened discussion about all of that, but, all right, so you're gonna move 300 over there into that we're gonna actually overfund the school board's request for the first time, all right, 300, okay? All right, so I think that sends a very positive message.
Thank you.
Okay?
300,000.
Okay.
300 million, we've solved our problems.
Okay.
I, I just got a couple of questions. Sister said, Sister City Association has greatly expanded what they're doing, could you add another 3,000 into there, you've got like 17 grand, add another three there. St. Mary's, God knows they did God's work out there, we support them for 15,000, and they haven't said a word. I know you've got some capital money this year, but could you put 5,000 there? I mean, that just, it almost seems too little, but. Now, the net bus service, looks to me like you fully funded this thing again, we're gonna try to save you some money. I mean, can you, do we really need to do it seven days a week? I, I see those things on Sunday mornings, there's nobody.
We're supposed to have stopped it, but we haven't, have we?
I mean, can, I mean, even if you just, July 1st stopped it on Sundays, we've, we've been going on forever, and there, but you, but you have completely funded the darn thing, it looks to me like.
Just bringing up the date, Paul, we had a meeting, Perry and I, a group of people from, you know, downtown, I thought we were gonna stop it four months ago, three months ago, and I guess we have to have a public hearing to stop it, we need to stop it, and they were gonna put their heads together and figure out how it could efficiently be run, and I, you know, I don't think...
Right now, they're just running around in circles with the drivers.
Well, I know, you know, I keep seeing it.
Especially on the weekends.
We need to have a public hearing to stop it, and they're gonna come out with their recommendation, it needs to have some funding in there, but it needs to be effective, or not at all, because we were, we had a six-month test, and it was not effective, so we said stop.
Well, I'm glad Stanley's here, I mean, Stanley would have stopped it on the weekends a long time ago, except for the somehow, nobody would want to come to grips with it.
HRT has to have a public hearing, they have one scheduled for June.
When?
For June.
Why did it take so long? Why did it take so long?
Well, for, for whatever reason, haven't we fully funded it?
From 2013?
Yeah.
Nine, nine months.
Where is that in here? It's, it's...
Why? Can't we move up to...
You need to update your glossary.
It's 234, it's on page 234.
I mean, we, we talked about three months, and they wouldn't, they want glossary?
Net service, we have $730,000 in it this year. And we, we actually added 500 grand to it.
Well, there, there's one problem, the, the 2012 number's wrong, so that's the big problem, it costs a lot more, it costs more than 2012, so math doesn't work to just take that and extrapolate the number.
Okay, but I'm trying to find you some more money to do with all these other...
Well, I would totally eliminate it, they're...
No, I don't want, I didn't say totally.
We were, we're working on a...
I just said Sunday, for goodness sakes.
They understand that if it's not successful, then it, it would not gonna happen, but we met with this group, and they're really working hard on coming up with something that might work.
Who is the group, and, and, and how do they represent the population?
Well, they're, granted, there's the Downtown Norfolk Council and the Gent Business Association, so it's again the Gent Neighborhood League and the Downtown Norfolk Civic League, so the people that it serves, not only residents, but the...
Cut it, like you said.
Well, you can't do it unless the, you guys are...
See, because in the budget, it was supposed to have also included Church Street a couple years ago, and somehow mysteriously, that money disappeared, and so did that coming through Church Street disappeared, so we just can't keep serving these how-bout groups and, and let other people who need to enjoy these same things, and so I'm with you, Baca, cut it.
I, I, I didn't say cut it, I said we were supposed to have stopped it until we came up with a plan, and then put that plan in action, and if it wasn't successful, then we would reevaluate, but it's still running, so I, HRT had their...
Okay, I opened up a sore, I don't want to, I don't, I didn't need to do that.
But I mean, it's something we would like to see be successful, but not to people behind it.
Marcus, you've got 35 grand in here for the Hampton Roads Sports Commission, maybe he needs to stay there, I don't know what we, what we're, we used to have a guy working in economic development who, you know, promoted sports in the city and, and recreation, and, you know, we actually got a return on that, I mean, I don't guess we ought to take it out right now, but I just think we ought to have some report back, what we're getting out of this Hampton Roads Sports Commission this year. I, I, you know, I've talked in the past about, you know, trying to increase the return from the water system, and as in the ROI, which we're entitled to do, we haven't done that in forever, I mean, forever, I mean, we haven't probably changed it in 10 years, you know, maybe you don't want to do it this year, but I, I don't, you know, I do think it's something we ought to talk about, and will you tell me, I mean, I, we talked sometime in here about how important transportation is, and I keep think, thinking you need somebody on your staff whose life it is, I mean, whose whole job it is, is to worry about things like the Midtown Tunnel, this new construction that's coming up, go to these public hearings and actually, or go to the state and talk about what's important to us, the, you know, intercity rail, functioning of the light rail, the new, you know, expansion of the HRBT, or the, you know, the third crossing, or, I mean, whatever, I mean, we just, we don't have anybody unless you're gonna hire a consultant, and, but even a consultant... And, but even a consultant, it's not like they should, I mean, you know, we need somebody who can answer questions like on the dime. And I don't know what you've done about it, but transportation is so important.
Can Anders do some of that work?
Anders?
Then you got.
No, that's, that's.
John Kiefer?
John Kiefer, but I mean, I, but John didn't have anybody down there who was built as a, no, 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 that's, they got all that stuff. And maybe you don't want to do it because I've been saying it forever, but I.
We've paid a series of interviews, we've been, we've been working to get somebody on board, and we're still actively recruiting.
Okay, now, setting us, setting aside just for the moment Paul's request to add another one point eight million dollars for his school board funding to, for the raises for the city employees. I asked Marcus, uh, coming into the meeting, how much money he thought, without changing the rest of the budget, what he could find in operating costs in here. And he had about a million dollars that he thought that otherwise we would have to start searching for ways. If we added more than a million, maybe we'd have to cut something. Maybe we, you know, somewhere in his budget, he'd have to change something. Maybe there's a million dollars he could find, knowing that we always add something. In years past, we've added four, five hundred thousand dollars, sometimes more than that. And in the capital budget, that there was maybe another million dollars, you know, knowing the council wanted to add some stuff. Okay, let me just start with the capital stuff. Looks, looks to me like, and y'all, we took care of the school piece, so. Angela wanted to add a half million. That takes all of them. I mean, if you added two hundred and fifty, and that's just a round number, you were just reaching for a round number.
Curbs are.
Would you settle for like two fifty?
I'll take half. That's a compromise.
And then, Paul, you wanted Huntersville.
That's more than we had.
Paul, you wanted Huntersville, and if you add a hundred, a hundred there.
Right.
And then if you need more than that, then we can reach into what Angela just added. The, the library to do its own budget, I said two fifty, but if you added two hundred there. And a hundred for the rec centers, that gets you six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Anthony wanted to add the muse thing. I don't have any idea what it would cost to fix that.
John.
John, do you know? Tell us a million dollars or something. No, what would it just cost to fix something like that? John, you always have a round number.
Fifty to a hundred thousand, fifty cents.
You know what I'm talking about, John?
You never did anything for fifty thousand dollars. You never did anything. You always tell me two hundred thousand dollars. Every time I ask for a stop sign, it's two hundred thousand dollars.
John, you think that's.
Okay, well, okay, so we'll say a hundred, so that takes us to seven fifty. Did, did that cover everybody's request for capital needs? I mean, anybody have anything in here that I didn't mention that, that you guys had mentioned? And now we, we go to the operating needs, unless somebody else is, uh, the operating needs were, and we'll come back and visit this thing about the employees' raises. There, there's an auditor position, and we'll say that's fifty thousand dollars. That Tommy mentioned. Barclay mentioned raises for two, let's be clear, okay? You want two percent in raises?
I, I don't know, I want to give them the money, they do what they feel is appropriate.
What was the fifty thousand dollars?
Is that right? After benefits and stuff like that, would it?
Is that twenty five? I reached a hundred, I mean.
Fifty each.
So the auditors.
It's more of fifty. That's more of eighty.
All right, we'll say round, round number seventy-five.
I think seventy-five might be close.
All right, so we'll say that's seventy-five auditor. And by the time you added fifty thousand dollars to Botanical Gardens, Visiting Norfolk, and. Uh, is there any, I mean, the zoo doesn't, they're okay in that consortium? Anybody else we ought to, how about Festivance? You know, do they, are they okay? Are they doing, I mean, Visiting Norfolk, I mean, I was talking about, they said employee raises. We're talking about fifty thousand dollars for two percent for them, so.
How about Carribla Fest? You know, we said we were gonna roll that in as a.
That's already in there somewhere. This is not in.
Oh, we were talking about, you know, as we, we lost Afra in Festivance, we were gonna make that a mainstream festival.
Okay, so that's another fifty.
And build that up, yeah, because we didn't have banners and.
So that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Do you follow me, Marcus?
I didn't.
And Botanical Gardens, Visiting Norfolk and Festivance.
That's Norfolk Catholic math there, okay?
I didn't, uh, I got another one here, I have ten, there's a city auditor, one question. You know, I mentioned the libraries, staying open on Mondays. We're told that's five hundred and forty thousand. Is it, is it, everybody around, is there enough support for five hundred and forty thousand? I don't.
That sounds like a lot of money. Does, can you, can you switch it to every other Monday? I mean, can you do it on a different schedule?
Things about libraries, they've become safe places.
Like in the summertime where we know that it would be.
The libraries.
Where it's utilized more.
I think the libraries are.
I think they mean, they.
I think the libraries are.
You can open community centers, I think you almost, you ought to be opening red centers.
Before we go totally, you're gonna have two more council people walk in here to the list here.
This is, well, I don't. Okay.
Okay.
Libraries, five hundred, whatever it was.
Could it be, it's ten libraries.
But you're talking about heating and cooling them?
I understand, you gotta heat it, I mean, you kinda heat it cold anyway, turn it on. You're talking about ten thousand dollars. You're talking about fifty thousand, ten thousand a week.
At staffing.
Keep those open? Ten thousand fifty days.
But it's really the staffing. It's staffing.
Staffing, okay, so that's divided.
It's, it's really the staffing.
I understand, it could be staffing.
Well, can you phase it in like you're phasing the rec centers?
Fifty thousand a library, divide about ten thousand.
Are you phasing in the, in the rec centers?
Yeah, you've got a couple of rec centers that are gonna go back to opening up on Wednesday. I don't know how many, was it two, two or three?
Uh, two.
Two. But I don't know if you could do something similar with the libraries because.
Yeah, quite, is that, you see, gonna.
That's covered, yes.
Okay. You know, like some of the bigger libraries, have them open?
Actually, the smaller libraries are the ones that need to be open as opposed to the larger ones, because they're more closely related to the neighborhoods.
Yeah, but what is it over in the, the Poplar Hall's, is there, where is the?
Janif's Library.
Janif and then, I mean, they have a couple of them. There's another one that I got an email about that needs real help.
The George.
A thousand dollars.
Over five hundred feet?
Yeah.
No, that's the one that your lady came down, you're talking about off Princess Anne.
That's Blyden. Yeah, but we make that.
Oh, the Blyden, that's what it was, the Blyden.
Yeah.
But I, you know, it, so now we got some capital needs, we've done some of this stuff with the libraries, as well as some operating costs to keep them open. I think that would be a good day's work if we got the libraries open on Mondays. And that, that, by the way, is a citywide piece. I mean, that, you know, is Pretlow open seven days a week?
Yes, Pretlow's the only one right now.
Okay, so you got ten of the smaller libraries open. You're saying it costs a thousand a day to open it?
Yeah, that's the information we have, if it's filed with council. Norm's not here. Can I talk with him?
Thousand a day, not over two or three people in there, is it?
Because it's really having to frame the staff up also.
Does he have to hire more staff?
You'd have to hire some.
Right, that's the, that's.
Well, what is paying for, what's five hundred and forty thousand dollars get you? I mean, is that just opening the door without staff? I can't.
That's the biggest piece that is the staff.
That's a thousand a day.
Does he have part-time employees that could shift at full-time if they were to do that or add those hours?
Yeah, but he replaced those part-time people.
No, they would just add to their hours. They might have that part-time now, but if they got ten hours added on to their.
A thousand a day to open that thing?
Over five hundred.
Yeah, open, most of them are, are small, except for Pretlow. I mean, so it costs a thousand dollars a day to open a library. I don't, I don't, that's what it's come, that's what they're telling us.
Well, how about we go with the big number? We let Marcus talk to Norm, and if the big number comes back being a smaller number, then we can spin that someplace else. We can do that.
See, the pools, when.
I mean, really?
When the pools are closed to the public, we still have staff in, in the pool, and they're still working. According to some of the employees I talked to.
Yeah, they're still.
They're still there, they're in there, but it's not open to the public. So what are we saving by that? Is it really the air conditioning and stuff like that? Or, because we close the pools one day a week, I guess, or maybe, is it, Daryl's it?
Right.
One day a week, but it's not the same number of staff. When a pool's fully actually, you got patrons coming in, we have four guards on duty, but when we're closed, there's usually only two guards. They're doing routine or minimal cleaning.
So how much money have you just spent?
We have spent seven hundred and seventy-three thousand.
I like that.
Who's got the?
That's not capital though.
No, that's operating. Plus, we spent, uh.
Put nothing in our reserve, right?
Yes, we have.
We put nothing else. We haven't added.
No, are the pools.
Why don't we take it to a million, put two fifty in there?
Yeah, reopen it back. I thought it was just a rec center.
So part of the load one, we.
We got, okay, okay. We've put seven, we've, we've got seven fifty in capital and we got seven seventy-three in operating.
Why don't we try to put a couple, a couple hundred into our, our reserve? Not, not the five percent, but the risk.
Well, we're not finished.
The risk. John, you're fooling ourselves, guys. You can spend all this money and just have one down, and we're in trouble.
Need to sell some more of our open land in the city.
Well, we need it. We got everything on the website now, it's all.
One issue to be determined is what Paul's brought up. Is there any other issues that we, that I recap it? Everybody got it? Okay. Was that, did we get it, Barclay, what you mentioned, and Anthony and Angela?
Can I just ask a couple of quick questions? And I don't want any more money, I just want an explanation. The, this, how, this preliminary engineering where we put almost three and a half million a year in that, is that spent in-house or?
It's in-house. It's something that I think occurred back in two thousand and four, where you can charge a portion of salaries related to the public work stamp. That's working on capital projects to the project.
That's kind of payroll.
That is reimbursing staffs, yes.
Okay, so that's what, we, we do stuff in-house for like, whatever, we can charge it back, so that really is another way of reducing our.
Operating costs.
Operating costs, okay, so, all right, the, the other thing, I mean, I guess we do that, we do it that way because it's.
Sure, if, if you looked in the CIP, we stopped doing it starting in twenty fourteen. It does save the operating budget, but you're paying debt on that.
But it's the money anyway.
Right, so you could do it either way. It gave relief to the operating budget maybe a decade ago.
One other question, on the, on the, on page three forty-nine, the debt service for the conference center has kind of jumped around. What is, is that, stuff we bought of, that, of the lot, what is it?
We don't have enough time to talk.
All right, well, sometimes, yeah, we tell them, one year for me.
Some bonds were issued and we're paying debt. We should be collecting interest, but I, but it's a very complicated situation, something that Virginia Williams did. And I guess she had good advice at the time, even I didn't understand what was happening.
Can you, like, when this all over explained to me, because I'd like to understand the story. It's been a roller coaster ride, and I mean, that's a good, very good time.
This has been discussed a little bit, but the relocation of the bus transfer station. I know that it's important to get it off of Cedar Grove, but four million dollars just seems like a huge amount. And I, I mean, we're gonna put this out for RFP, I guess, and if they know that we have four million dollars in the budget for this, are we? I mean, do you see where I'm going with this? It's just, it seems like a pretty hefty expense. Or are there some parts of this that can be phased in over two years as opposed to doing it all now with this? I mean, I want it to be done right, and I understand it's important and it will serve an important part of our population, you know, and get people, cars off the road. But four million dollars seems like a lot for something that wasn't in last year's budget. We weren't even talking about this in last year's budget. And all of a sudden, this pops up, and I know it's just, it's mostly more debt, but is there a better way that we can do this? Or, I, I mean, we're building the intermodal for about the same amount, right? I mean, that's. Yeah, I mean, the train station, I mean.
That will be used once in the morning and once in the evening.
Right.
You know, this bus station is being used. I mean, it's, I don't know, look, I.
Aren't there grant funds that they're applying for?
Yeah, we're gonna try to plan for two million dollars in grant funds. In fact, we've already scheduled a moment to go see the, the FDA administrator up in Washington to see if we could get two million, but.
Will that reduce this by two million?
Yes, yes.
That'll reduce the four, I thought, I thought we were at six million and the two million reduced to four million.
The two would reduce the four, so then we'll, we'll let you know if that happens.
Will that give more money for the capital improvement ideas then?
If, if, but I mean, we don't have it, we don't have that grant, so you have to.
Right.
You know, I think you keep it, I, you know, and then we can actually all vote on where we're gonna build it, but I think that's a good number. And I, the people of Cedar Grove thing, we've, those people have suffered long enough. I think we need to move out wherever we're gonna build this thing. But let's, I mean, this year's budget doesn't, by the way, it's only gonna, what is it, Marcus, twenty thousand dollars in this year's budget for debt service by the time we.
Yeah, four million, yes.
Yeah, I mean, that's so, we'll know before we spend a nickel, and we'll come back and amend the budget if we have to, drop it down.
And HRT doesn't pay other than applying for the grant. They have no responsibility for this.
They pay for our own transport station.
But if we don't get the grant, then we could potentially scale it back. We have the matching grant.
If we have four million, if we get the grant.
I understand, it's two million, but if we, we have to match, in other words, if they, if we get a two million dollar grant, is there any certain amount we have to match it with?
They expect us to match the two.
That's what I'm saying, so it could be a two million dollar city expenditure.
Right.
Or if we don't get the grant, then we might even go back to the drawing board, I would think, and see. Because I always thought it was too much when we were five or whatever.
Well, if we got four million dollars allotted for it, then we can keep the four million dollars allotted for it that we have.
Okay, well, my feeling is, hopefully we get the two, but if we don't, we need to talk about it.
The transfer station is gonna be used for more than just our residents of Norfolk. Once we build that library, once you get that railroad and everybody's gonna be using the transfer station. So there's no need to, you know, put up a outhouse, you know.
No, I'm just wondering whether.
If everybody's gonna be using it, why aren't they contributing? I mean, I thought this was gonna be a regional spot.
They contribute it, you know, the ones, I'm talking about the ones that are gonna be staying in our hotels and, you know.
My concern was about the, where they got the dollar amount from, because there has been some other projects in the past where numbers been.
If you start pulling the.
Spotted out, it's not exactly what it caused.
If you want to go into the budget and start pulling stuff out, then we ought to put it all on there. Okay, I mean, and I mean, everybody's, you know, there are things in here that are important to people.
Sure, I just asked about cost. Is it really a four hundred, a four million dollar thing? And where did that dollar figure come from? Because the, the design, we put five hundred fifty in for a design, so who estimated that amount? Where did that estimate come from? And we've been wrong before on estimates, if it's coming from some city departments, and I just want to make sure that that is the right amount. Are we overestimating what this is gonna cost?
Well, I'm much more comfortable with the four million than the previous number. It had a lot of contingency in it. And also, at some point, I think even thirty percent contingency, mainly because of what was not known. There's something we haven't talked about, there's even a possibility that with some of the utilities, that almost a half million of that may not be borne by the general fund. So very quickly, you have a project that's a million five, that's related to the general fund, even though you see four million dollars.
Right, right, okay.
So we're comfortable with the estimate.
We are gonna actively pursue disposing of, selling surplus property, schools, private land. I know we've got it all on the website now, we've got the transparent little card, what they call it, site, city site.
City sites.
There's a lot, a lot of it out there.
I didn't know Paul was going, going to ask about, you know, three percent raise for city employees, but I did ask the manager to compare what we were doing with what other cities are doing. And that's where the sheet came to you. Of the seven cities in Hampton Roads, only Suffolk is also giving two percent. That it looks like I, you know, and I, I think our pay plan, plan is, is, it should be relatively competitive with the rest of these clubs. And that's, you know, I.
You knew I was gonna ask about that three percent.
No, I didn't, I really didn't.
And so, all of Suffolk is doing, you know, Virginia Beach is not doing anything, and Hampton is doing one percent. Our employees are special, and you have to admit that our employees go to the Met bus every day. They haven't said a word in four years, so we can reach, I hope we can reach and try to do that. And God bless those other cities, but we gotta take care of our employees. And God bless those other cities, but we got to take care of our employees. They are jewels. They, I mean, they go to the mat every day. They haven't complained, they've just sucked it up.
I agree with that. I'd like to give them more. But I, I think, but I think the manager's recommendation it too. And I think from what we, our ability to pay is, is, is...
We can take a million back from Ward's Corner, they only asked for one, and you gave them two.
That's...
I don't, I mean, I support Ward's Corner.
No, actually, we asked for four.
Okay. Yeah, I, I support Ward's Corner. But I think we need to, we need to try to find another million eight for our employees. We got to do that. We have to, we have to show them something.
And I think we need to include the retirees and that. If we're going to do it for the employees, we need to put a retirement...
If we can't do it for the retirees, I love them too. We'd come back and get them next year. But we have to do something, and, you know? A lot of our retirees get social security and other benefits, and they have two or three checks coming into the house. And I love the retirees, I support them, and I always have. But right now, we can only do one, that's two to one.
Okay, well, we would need five of them. And I, I think I'd like to give it two. So, Paul is one of them. Pardon me?
You're saying? I think there is, you know, I think we have to be business. I mean, I just know the private sector, and I know they're great employees. And I think too, it's, you know, the manager's recommended, and I think too, it's got...
Just two and a half.
What's a half?
So, one, I guess, you said, one hundred, one point eight, a half is nine hundred thousand. Where are we left with money?
There was, I guess there was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in operating funds that weren't used. That if, you know, the manager could reach for. Was it Hampton?
If one point eight total would do two point five for everybody, that would work.
We don't have the money yet, man. This is, I mean, there isn't...
Nine hundred thousand.
Time to speak. Was it Hampton that one time they took their surplus and they gave all their employees, like, a gift card or to a...
They...
I don't know how that was received, but...
It didn't make it.
It didn't make it.
We gave, if I was last year, there was a thousand bucks.
Just the employees.
Terry, I don't know if you heard all the conversation.
No.
It would be another... Are you, are you just, I don't want to characterize. Paul wants to move from two to three percent raises. And that would, the manager says that's one point eight million dollars to do that. And...
And that doesn't include school employees?
That doesn't include school employees. I think that's, I think that's a budget problem.
We got schools for six.
Yes.
If we're going to do anything, we ought to do more than six.
Well, we don't actually, we don't make the decision. We're supporting two percent, but it's not our call. I mean, if the, if the school system wanted to do it, they could change it around. It's just that their plan was two, and we're fully funded. So, it's not like we're giving them two. But we're allowing them to give two. So, what else are we spending here? What else are we allocating? So, I, you know, pushed very strongly that I, I feel we should give more money to the schools. And I know you all have talked about it.
We put three hundred thousand dollars in the budget.
I, I don't think that's enough.
Did you get the information?
No.
Okay. What about the raises for the schools? I mean, for the, what Mr. Reddick said?
I'm comfortable with two.
Two percent? Comfortable with seeing the ninety-eight percent.
Anybody?
You're not fighting me, you're fighting your employees. I don't think you're hurting me, you're hurting your employees.
Oh, it's not about you.
You know?
It's totally not about you.
I ain't even talking to you.
It's not about you.
Okay, wait a minute, let's...
You know, you're hurting your employees, you're not hurting me.
Okay. Look, I tell you what, I'll hold the gap here, okay? Let's try to just direct, we don't, direct your comments to me if you want, if you don't have to direct them.
You're hurting your employees, Paul. You're not hurting me. You know, and not that you intentionally want to hurt me, but I'm just saying, you're hurting your employees. They've been sitting around for four years with nothing. And if we can find money to do certain things, there's certainly one point eight, it should be a one point eight million dollars somewhere in a closeout, that we can find some money. If Marcus can come back and find us some money, that won't impact this budget. Where we, where, where are you?
Well, I, I think he's recommended two percent. I think he's done a pretty good job.
Done a great job. But you got, you got, but, but you got to look at what gas is costing, man? And what, and, and, you know, people talk about gas, groceries, you know, food, everything is high. And our employees have been sitting still, not complaining, coming to work, doing a great job for us for four years for nothing. I think we can try to find another one percent. That's just me. That's just me.
I think everybody agrees that if we had the wherewithal, we would certainly reward our employees. I don't think we have given them nothing. We have been able to absorb many of their health food cost, health costs through these four years that they otherwise might have had to absorb. But I, you know, I, I totally agree on the two percent. But you will never convince me that if we're talking about our, our employees, I could ma, I feel it's a much stronger case to take care of our kids and our students and our potential for our future. And I think there isn't anything more important than we would do than to fund education in our youth. So, if, I would argue that if we're going to task Marcus with trying to find some extra money, and I apologize that I had to be absent for your earlier discussion, that's clearly where I think we need to be putting our, our...
Well, you know, we had that discussion, that's why I was hoping you would have had that information. But I'm not, I'm not really comfortable just sitting there. I was hoping that we would have had information that we could...
I do have information in that they, our superintendent, our acting superintendent, I'm sorry, I didn't have dollar information. But his recommendation was that if we were going to give extra funding, that if it would be one-time funding, it would be to, for technology to support many of our underserved programs.
I thought that, and he brought that up.
And otherwise, it would be for, for literacy teachers.
And that's why we moved to three hundred.
Yeah, so as far as that goes, I'm right with you. Because, you know, they, we haven't fully funded. I mean, you know, we, we, we cleared, we closed a gap. But they never put everything on the table for us to see what is truly needed and be able to make sure those, those critical programs, like the middle college program or some of the other programs Tommy could identify, that really need our support. And so, giving them the money doesn't guarantee that those programs would be supported. So, at some point, I would like it, maybe it'd be, it would be next year. But I hope they're more forthcoming in terms of putting it all on the table and letting us look at where we're short, where we're hurting, you know, from a pupil standpoint, so we can be...
Right. And they, they do tend, some of the school board members have sugarcoated the last loss of staff and said, oh, we're not losing anybody. But they've lost five hundred employees in the last three years, another hundred and twenty-eight this year. And yet, nobody's really losing their job because their, you know, those positions are going through attrition or, you know? But those are actual positions being cut. And what I said, Terry, was that the literacy teachers at the elementary school, and they've been forced to have, they're cutting based off of the standards of quality. And so, they're cutting positions now that, you know, are needed in our, our district, you know, for support. And that's the problem. That's where you're really starting to hit the bone with these cuts. And I worry about our elementary school kids and the reading level and, you know, how that impacts our on-time graduation when they're cutting those positions. But you can't cut anywhere else.
Look, I mean, they sent us a budget that had a three point one percent increase in it. You know, our budget ourselves has got a half percent increase in it. But we were able to, to, to send, I think, what is it, nine, a little over nine million dollars more their budget increased by this year than it was the year before. We were, we fully funded their request. We actually now come back and put another three hundred thousand on top of it. We have never cut the dollar amount that the city of Norfolk is sending to the schools in all these years, when, you know, we lost seven percent of our own workforce over here. We've, for the past four or five years in a row, we spent less money than we did the year before. I mean, it's not like our heart's not in the right place. And we also know we couldn't go back and tax our, our, our citizens anymore. It, the state is the one who has cut these folks. And by the way, I think we lost six or seven hundred, I mean, students over that period of time too. So, there's a little balance there, not much. And I, you know, Terry, I'm big on education too. I, we're all around the state, we are. But we also got to come up with a budget that, you know, that we, that the citizens, that we can afford, right? And I think we've, anyway, that's, that's my piece. I'll never win over hearts, I mean, so...
Well, they have no wiggle room either. You know, they lost, they, they've asked for the three million that they had in reserves, I guess, you know, is, is being allocated back. So, it wasn't additional money, I guess. It was, but, you know, maybe the, the state, you know, we need to pressure our legislators more too. I mean, this is why that impact is really hitting us hard.
Well, let's get back here to the one point eight request. Are you, do you want to do two, two and a half, three? I mean, you know, we've got three of us, one thinks three, three of us think two. But we got to get a budget done so we can vote on this thing. And if you do the two, you, and then it begs the question about what do you do for the rest of the system?
I mean, you know, me, I, I'd be teachers, I mean, so if we couldn't give it to teachers and city employees, then I think we'd create some division, and I'm, I'm not for that.
All right, Angela?
I can buy, I can buy that if we did, if we included teachers and not employees.
I know we can't do it, so I know we're not going to give it.
Yeah, I, I can buy that.
I'm the same. And I, my main concern is giving a, across-the-board raise. I, I don't think that somebody making over a hundred thousand dollars a year should get a three percent raise, and somebody making twenty thousand dollars a year get a three percent raise. I think it should be, we should take care of the little people first.
Is, is there in fact any increase or change in healthcare benefits? With the proposed two percent raise? You know how in the past we've given a raise, but then they also, by the way, had the, I mean...
Same thing as it was last year.
Yeah, so no change that way.
Same thing.
Their coverage is exactly the same, and their, their contribution is the same.
You were right here, depending on the plan that you choose, yes.
Then I would just say then, you know, you know, go with the two this year. But next year, we need to be prepared to...
So, Marcus, you said there's no, there's not going to be any increase in their health insurance, and it's based on the plan that they select? Okay.
It's, it's the same thing that we did this year, but for those individuals who select the value.
Okay.
Okay, there is no increase. We absorb one hundred percent.
There was value.
It's a, it's a plan that has a lower premium to begin with. And then we have the plus, which has a higher premium. For the most part, the plans are the same. But what happens with the plus, you can just say that it's almost as if you're getting, I don't say additional services, but it's, it's a richer plan.
What about the deductible?
The deductible will change, okay? But I do want to make sure that, that I'm saying this the right way. For somebody who's in the plus plan, who was in the plus plan this year, or was in the plus plan in two thousand and eleven, what we did for two thousand and twelve is that we split the increase fifty-fifty. We're doing that same thing in two thousand and thirteen proposing. So, those folks who are in the two, in the plus plan, the premium increase is split fifty-fifty. Same thing with two thousand and twelve, those people in the value plan, we absorb a hundred percent of the increase. We're doing the same thing in twelve, thirteen. We're trying to get people who would go into the value plan, go into the value plan. And if you do...
Is value savings, is that a lower, you know?
Lower cost to the, to the city. I don't, Ron, is that, am I doing that the right way?
Lower cost to the employees and the city.
But what about services? I mean, if you go into the emergency room or, for it to be value, I mean, is it, you know, eighty-seven octane versus ninety-three?
Sure. What, what's the biggest difference, Ron? If you had to...
Value plan has lower premiums for both the city and employee. It does have slightly higher deductibles.
That's lower deductibles.
So, yes.
Now, when you say slightly higher deductible, sometimes you can go to a physician and your, your deductible is thirty dollars. Or a fifth of that's...
It's your copay.
That's the copay.
Copay, okay. But what's the deductible?
The deductible is usually that, that falls for, for emergency or hospital services. Things that are outside your normal, you know, visit, you have your primary care or other regular visits.
And so, what is the impact roughly, value versus, you know, favor or plus or whatever?
On the, on the premium?
Not on the premium, but on the deductible.
On the deductible.
Roughly on the deductible? If you're going in for a six thousand dollar procedure.
About a hundred dollars.
Okay. Well, I think we've resolved that at least.
But let me ask a question again. If Marcus can find one point eight billion dollars somewhere, and it's not going to impact the budget, is the sentiment still the same not to give the employees a raise?
Well, I think it's hard to, it's going to impact the budget, and I...
I mean, if it's closeout money somewhere, if he finds the money from nineteen sixty...
If he were to come in here next week and say, I, guys, I found another couple of million dollars, what do you want to do with it? And I don't believe he'll do that. But I, I mean, if he has, then we'll, you know, we can... Yeah, so we don't have a unanimous.
Yeah, how do you know?
So, I mean, and then it gets, well, it gets, it gets even more complicated. But, but Terry, her only budget request is to add another couple hundred thousand dollars to schools, okay? So, that goes from three to five. And so, Marcus, you can take it out of the VRS, but there, but, and that's good.
Give five years to phase that in? Five years, what's the overall cost to phase that in?
You got, you got...
One point eight?
Yeah.
So, we were going to fund it all upfront?
I got five hundred thousand dollars in...
You think that that's the smartest way to approach that? Or can we get more, can we even get more than a couple hundred thousand out of that? I know we're, but we're going to have to take it out later, but... Yeah, I'm just, I'm asking him, but I don't, yeah, understand how that works over time, what we're...
We're going to have to backfill everything, because we're, so we're spending extra money to come back and stick it in. So, I wouldn't go too far down that road.
Let me ask one question. A couple of the speakers who were speaking on behalf of the school and some of the teachers' supplies, and a lot of the teachers were saying that they have to spend their own money.
That's why I said, they used to get a credit card each one of them. They had it for a hundred dollars.
Two hundred.
Two hundred, one hundred, two, one hundred, now this year it's fifty. I'd like to, I'd like to go back in and make it a hundred dollars again, but we don't have the ability to do that. So, they can purchase those supplies, because I think that's right out of the teachers'.
Can we give them, can we go out and give them, give them on?
A credit card?
A credit card. Nothing, just like we build football fields, you know, once you give it to them.
That was a capital.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't know. But we're giving them an extra half million dollars. So, let them decide. And that's a big deal, guys. I mean, that's, we've never, ever overfunded the school board request.
And they said that this, what they really needed, if they had a wish list, would be towards technology.
If it was a one-time.
Right, one-time.
Okay. And then we're going to come back and talk about next year, about how we, you know, I know there's some thoughts about a, a structural change, so we can have a dedicated source, so...
I have one other question. This is not money. Well, sort of not money. I, I would like to say, Marcus, that I was very taken by reading this book. I, I'm sure you all have already commented on this, that more than just budget,
I, I'm sure you all have already commented on this, that more than just budget, but really what you were planning to do with the city and the departments and things, is really very thoughtful and a lot of hard work. But one little request I would have was, I appreciated you putting in there four hours for employees per year to work in the schools. I'd like to think we could do a little more than that if, if people were inclined, or at least to make it available for people. I mean, did it, was anybody else taken with that, or?
I, I thought it was a great idea. If we'd never done it before, I wouldn't touch it.
Four hours to me, you know, I want a mentor to make it, have a relationship with the child. I mean, in, in, hopeful that would be one thing. I'm not sure four hours a year is going to achieve that. Does anybody else?
Are they, they're taking leave? You're giving them four hours of leave?
Four hours of leave.
So that really doesn't really end up costing us anything? If you really look at it. I'm just saying.
They're not doing work. I mean, they're doing nothing.
No, 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 I mean, but, but think about the, our schools drive our economy. I mean, so, I mean, the, the.
I guess what I, I would like to say, I think it was a really good first step. But I think we could grow this in so many ways. And if you all are not inclined that we increase the hours, we should at least increase the message that we have partners throughout this community that are going to do, do just that. And so, you know, I think it's a, it's a great example that we're setting as a city. But I hope that it wouldn't just stop there. And we would use that as, as a chance to grow some of that volunteerism in schools. Because, you know, I think that's one of the goals of NPS, is community partnerships. And, and if we set a lead in that, I think that speaks volumes.
Well, and there's a way to do it too, that outside of employee hours, there could be an incentive for employees to volunteer outside of their, I mean, schools are open late. They're, you know, and there's programs on.
But it's only if they know how to do that.
Right, that there's tutoring on weekends too, on, you know, on Saturday, that we could put money in the budget as an incentive for those employees who volunteer beyond their hours.
Well, then we can think about that actually. Okay. We have, everybody's got other issues, we've all resolved them. If, manager, do you have any questions? You got it? Okay, well, why don't we just, why don't we just end the discussion and we'll break for dinner, okay? And then we'll come back. It's nearly 6 o'clock, so if we eat and then if there's just any council issues, we'll try to. What else is on the budget?
Over there.
Is on the agenda.
Do you have a question? The trash man having four hours.
Okay. All right, well, let's go to the.